Vice President Cooper, we're gonna start in one minute. I guess we'll wait till the mayor gets here.
Okay, it is six o'clock. I would like to call the September second, twenty twenty-five regular meeting of the Kenai Peninsula Borough Assembly to order. This meeting is also being conducted through the Zoom meeting platform. It can also be heard on KDL FM ninety-one point nine, KBBI AM eight ninety, and KIBH FM ninety-one point seven. Please follow in Chair Tunsit's lead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We now will receive an invocation offered by CES Services Chaplain Tim Weekly. You may either remain standing or be seated. No one is required to participate.
God, as the meeting of the Borough Assembly takes place within these walls for the next moments in time, I ask for the clarity of thought for those speaking, listening ears for everyone to hear the root of the concerns, and actions that would meet the needs of each person on the Kenai Peninsula. I pray that all the items on the agenda will be discussed with an openness of mind and a willingness to open their hearts to find the solutions in the midst of the challenging world we live in. During this meeting, may you grant wisdom to those seeking answers to their questions, ability to listen while showing responsiveness to the concerns of each other, and discernment to put aside the differences to make an impact for the current and the future generations of our borough. May a blessing be given to the Assembly members and mayor as they have given their time to discuss the important issues weighing on the hearts and minds of those who live in this great place. It is with a common goal and combined efforts that many tasks have completed, been completed in the past, which we pray for future accomplishments to be achieved through a spirit of unity. I ask and also praise all of these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Weekly. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President Ribbons?
Present.
Vice President Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Basden is excused. Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Eklund?
Here.
Ms. Morton?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Tunsit?
Here.
You have a call, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next we will have committee reports, and we will start off as we always do with the Finance Committee brought to us by Chair Tunsit. Chair Tunsit, take it away.
Thank you, President Ribbons. The Finance Committee met at four o'clock today, and in lightning speed, we finished by four-ten. There were two items for public hearing on ordinances, and then there were three items of new business. The first item for public hearing on ordinances was ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen dash zero eight. This item is eligible for the consent agenda, and it amends ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen dash thirty-six relating to commercial passenger vessel tax proceeds received from the state of Alaska to the cities of Seward and Homer, and provides a revised effective date. And so what this, what this essentially does is revise the effective date retroactively to May first. That way, that the city of Seward can have expenses related to transportation qualified. And so that's what ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen dash zero eight does. The second is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen dash zero nine. This is approving the use of funds for the cost of distributing informational and promotional materials about ballot proposition one, seeking voter approval to require hand counting of in-person ballots. There was also an amendment put forward by Ms. Cooper on this one, which would include it, which would include ballot measure number five as well. And so with these, anytime that there's a ballot measure on the ballot, we also have an ordinance that specifically allows for materials to go out to explain what the ballot measure is. And so that's what this is. It's roughly thirty-four thousand dollars. That would include the promotional materials for both ballot measure one and ballot measure number five and Ms. Cooper's amendment. There were three items of new business. The first was ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen dash ten, accepting and appropriating grant funds of eighteen thousand two hundred to the Kenai Peninsula Borough for the River Center Access and Restoration Demonstration Project. This was brought to us by the mayor. There'll be a hearing for this on the sixteenth of this month. And really what this does is allow the River Center to construct sort of a demonstration project onsite, and so they could be able to show people what elevated light penetrating walkways look like, what revetment with spruce trees would look like, that sort of thing. So when they have questions, they can kind of have like, you know, boots on the ground, go look at it, show them the materials that are used, that sort of thing. The second was ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen dash eleven. This is accepting and appropriating grant funds for the purchase of three slip-on tanker units. And this was brought to us by the mayor. There'll be a hearing on the sixteenth of this month as well. This is accepting roughly ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars in grant money plus a one percent administration service fee for the purchase of these slip-on tanker units in Western Emergency Service Area. The final one was ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen dash twelve. This is appropriating funds from the insurance and litigation fund balance for additional insurance premiums and claims reserves. Again, this will have a hearing on the sixteenth, and we'll also be doing a work session, excuse me, an executive session about this one next meeting, because some of the elements involve claims. And so we'll talk about that in executive session. But at the heart of it, really, you know, there was a combination that we went from the Alaska Municipally Joint Insurance to the ARPA Insurance, and I'll probably butcher the acronym if I tried to say that one. But there were some unexpected increases in auto and general liability claims increases. And so this would request money from the insurance and litigation fund to cover that. We got through them pretty quick. We ended around four-ten. That concludes the Finance Committee report. Chair Ribbons, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Tunsit. Our next committee meeting was Policies and Procedures brought to us by Chair Cox. Chair Cox?
Thank you. So we started the Policies and Procedures Committee at four-forty-five and ended just before five PM. We started first with the mayor's report. There were no initial questions from the Assembly. The mayor said he would give his report tonight. There was an ask about any of the, any new information on the school bond issues. So if there's any new information, the mayor will bring that forward. The other item that we discussed was KPB dash seven-one-six-nine Tax Adjustment Request Approval. What that is, is changes to the assessment rule. These come when somebody comes to the assessor, and there's something that should be changed. They discuss it, and then we get that here if it's an appropriate change. Next was new business. We have two items on new business, both of which I plan to leave on the consent agenda. The first one is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero-three-seven, authorizing an agreement with the Central Peninsula General Hospital, Inc., for dispatch services. It's brought to us by the mayor and has been co-sponsored by the entire Assembly. What this is, is this will be an agreement with, with the Central Peninsula General Hospital, but for the Mobile Crisis Team, they do intervention, has to do with helping with health care and substance use crises, and how that is handled through nine-one-one, and that's what this will help to define is, is what those costs will be and how that will spread the cost so that it's used appropriately for those services. And next is the ordinance for introduction. We have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two-one, repealing and reenacting KPB Chapter five point one-two relating to real property tax, enacting a new KPB Chapter five point one-one relating to personal property tax, and a new KPB Chapter five point one-three relating to tax exemptions, credits, or deferrals, and a new KPB Chapter five point one-five relating to tax appeals. This is brought to us by the mayor. Hearing will be on ten-fourteen, twenty-twenty-five at our next meeting. So that would be the first meeting in October. We will be having a work session on that. It sounds like it will be fairly lengthy, hour to an hour and a half. If you were to look in our packet, there is a page or several pages that are just the highlights of what these changes are. So even though it's significant in what we're calling the changes, it actually is just to clarify and make more readable the code that's there. The changes are based on addressing issues expressed by the public administration, the Board of Equalization, and Assembly members. And that's seen in my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cox. That brings us on the agenda to approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. Are there amendments to the agenda and the consent agenda? Chair Tunsit?
I would like to add to the consent agenda ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen dash zero eight, amending ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen dash thirty-six relating to commercial passenger vessel tax proceeds received from the state of Alaska to the cities of Seward and Homer to provide for a revised effective date and would request unanimous.
Unanimous has been requested. Are there any objections? Seeing none, this ordinance is added to the consent agenda. Are there any other, are there any other amendments to the agenda, the consent agenda? Chair Tunsit?
Thank you, President Ribbons. I would move to add to the consent agenda ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen dash zero nine, approving the use of funds for the cost of distributing informational and promotional materials about ballot proposition number one, seeking voter approval to require hand counting of in-person ballots voted on Election Day, and would request unanimous.
Unanimous has been requested. Are there any objections? Seeing none, are there any other changes to the agenda or the consent agenda?
President Ribbons, I have a question perhaps for the clerk. With, with the one that I just requested, there is an amendment. I'm not sure if it's appropriate that I would make that amendment now or Ms. Cooper make that amendment now.
Thank you, Mr. Tunsit. Through the president, now is the best opportunity to make that amendment, please.
Okay, I would move to amend ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen dash zero nine as follows. An ordinance approving the use of funds for the cost of distributing informational and promotional materials about ballot proposition number one, seeking voter approval to require hand counting of in-person ballots voted on Election Day, and ballot proposition number five, seeking voter approval to require to change the current election date to align with the state of Alaska election date, and we're requesting unanimous.
Vice President Cooper?
Should we do all of the amendments at one fell swoop, and then we can request unanimous?
That makes sense to me.
Okay, I can do that. Madam Clerk, would you remind me, do I need to read through each one of these?
Yes, sir. Since it was a laydown, and it was, unfortunately did not make the electronic cutoff, it would need to be written to the record, please.
Okay, so continuing on my first amendment, and would it amend the sixth whereas clause to read, whereas it is essential to provide factual, nonpartisan information on the efficiencies, cost effectiveness, and accuracy of ballot tabulators and local election processes, procedures, and practices, and add the following whereas clauses before the sixth whereas clause, whereas voters should be aware that moving the borough regular election in November will cause certain logistical challenges, including polling place conflicts, ballot printing constraints, and due to the state making it clear that the borough and state will not be able to share election workers, the change may result in the need to recruit and train a separate pool of election workers apart from those serving state and federal elections. And whereas changing the borough regular election date to November would also require the purchase of polling place booths, signs, et cetera, currently shared with the state, and whereas unless the cities within the Kenai Peninsula Borough likewise amend their election dates, this election date change may void the MOA the borough has with the cities related to election administration. And whereas a borough election date change that does not include the cities changing their local election data accordingly would mean that city residents would continue to participate in city elections in October, resulting in multiple election dates for the same voters and increased voter confusion and administrative burden. And whereas moving the borough regular election date to coincide with state and federal elections could also result in local issues and local candidates being overshadowed by state and federal election campaigns. And amend section two to read that the Assembly hereby appropriate thirty-four thousand dollars from the general fund balance to account one-hundred dot one-one-one-one-zero dot twenty-six PR one dot four-nine-nine-nine-nine and approves the use of funds for an informational and promotional campaign which may be used to influence the outcome of an election on October seventh, two thousand twenty-five on ballot proposition one concerning hand counting ballots and ballot proposition five concerning changing borough elections to November. And we'd request unanimous.
Unanimous has been requested. Are there any objections? Seeing none, it is amended.
Sir?
Assembly Member Cox?
I think we still need to vote on the, to ask unanimous for the ordinance as amended.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, with that, the amendment passes. So I'm gonna send it back to you then, Chair Tunsit, for us to... Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's actually added to the consent, so the final vote on the ordinance as amended will be included with the consent vote.
Thank you, Chair Cox, for bringing this up. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for the clarification. And shortly, you will not be getting these mistakes from the president because he won't be sitting here anymore. Okay. That moves us on to... In a moment, the clerk will read the titles, the titles of the items on the consent agenda. After she reads them, you will have the opportunity to testify about them. All items that stay on the consent agenda will be approved or set for public hearing, whichever is the case when the Assembly approves the agenda and the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular Assembly meeting minutes. Ordinance twenty twenty-five nineteen oh eight, amending ordinance twenty twenty-four nineteen thirty-six relating to commercial passenger vessel tax proceeds received from the state of Alaska to the cities of Seward and Homer to provide a revised effective date, sponsored by the mayor. Ordinance twenty twenty-five nineteen oh nine, as amended, approving the use of funds for the cost of distributing informational and promotional materials about ballot proposition one, seeking voter approval to require hand counting of in-person ballots voted on Election Day, and ballot proposition number five, seeking voter approval to require to change the current election date to align with the state of Alaska election date, sponsored by Ms. Cooper. Resolution twenty twenty-five zero-three-seven, authorizing an agreement with Central Peninsula General Hospital, Inc. for dispatch services, sponsored by the mayor and the Assembly. Ordinance twenty twenty-five nineteen-ten, accepting and appropriating grant funds of eighteen thousand two hundred dollars to the Kenai Peninsula Borough for the River Center Access and Restoration Demonstration Project, sponsored by the mayor, hearing on September sixteenth. Ordinance twenty twenty-five nineteen-eleven, accepting and appropriating grant funds for the purchase of three slip-on tanker units, sponsored by the mayor, hearing on September sixteenth. Ordinance twenty twenty-five nineteen-twelve, appropriating funds from the insurance and litigation fund balance for additional insurance premiums and claim reserves, sponsored by the mayor, hearing on September sixteenth. Ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-one, repealing and reenacting KPB Chapter five-twelve relating to real property tax, enacting a new KPB Chapter five-eleven relating to personal property tax, a new KPB Chapter five-thirteen relating to tax exemptions, credits, or deferrals, and a new KPB Chapter five-fifteen relating to tax appeals, sponsored by the mayor, hearing on October fourteenth. That is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to public testimony on consent items read by the clerk. Is there anyone who would like to testify to any of the items on the consent agenda as read by the clerk? Madam Clerk?
I do have one online. Kevin Fraley?
Kevin Fraley, please state your place of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
All right, I'm a little technically challenged with this. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You will have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Kevin Fraley. I am the ballot printer for the state of Alaska. I print all the ballots for the state elections as well as all the cities and boroughs across the state. I've been doing this for about twenty-five years. And it came to my attention, I think we were at the Nutcracker or something, and we saw some people that were gathering signatures to go to hand count for our local borough. It's a very difficult thing for me to watch this happen because I'm seeing it in other places like the Matsu Borough. It's happened in Houston. And we're going backwards. For these hand count elections, we're taking away the ability to qualify the election. These machines do not connect to the internet. There is no nefarious activity that can happen with them. They just simply count Xs and Os. That's all they do. I offered the folks that were collecting signatures to come to my office to look at these machines. I would open them up for them. They were not interested in knowing the truth about these machines. And so it just brings me great concern because if we take away the ability to count on these machines, if they want to hand count, fine, but don't take away the ability to qualify that hand count. Because when you do a hand count on these...
Mr. Fraley, this is, this is the presiding officer. The, what we're, what we're, is on the consent agenda is appropriating money for educational information regarding two items that are gonna be on the ballot. It seems to me as though you're starting to stray off into discussing the merit of the item that's gonna be on the ballot. I would appreciate it if you could keep your comments specifically to what's before this body tonight.
Okay. Well, so bottom line is education. If you educate the public about what's going on, a lot of these things that happen on the ballot get defeated simply because there's no one being educated about the truth of what's going on. And so I would just plead with the borough to pull the funds together to educate the public about the truth of the situation. It's gonna hurt our, our borough if they cannot count the ballots accurately.
Thank you for your testimony. If you would like to speak to the substance of the ballot proposition, there will be other opportunities during tonight's assembly meeting where you can talk to that directly. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else who is, who would like to speak?
I do not see anyone else.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to items that are on the consent agenda? Please come to the podium, state your name and your place of residence for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Joan Corr, Califonski Beach area. It just, in this ordinance, as long as putting out information does not try to sway the public from one side or the other. If the government body has their agenda, what they want, and then they sway the educational materials to lend, lend credence to their side, that's, that's what I see is could be dangerous with sending out materials as far as explaining the vote. It's just like the man that just talked said some wrong information. So how do we know what is gonna be printed? Or is it gonna be like the pro and con thing that was, that they used to do in the pamphlets? So that's just something that I worry about or am concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to items appearing on the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no one, Vice President Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous approval for the agenda and consent agenda as amended.
Unanimous has been requested. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none, the motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda as amended passes. And that moves us on to you, Mayor Machiki, for commending resolutions and proclamations. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is exciting after Saturday where Ketch Mac Bay Recovery Connection brought the sun out, literally and figuratively, for the run for recovery. Beautiful day. Very well organized event. I had the opportunity to participate in the emceeing and some announcements. I didn't run it like the former Assembly President did, but it's a great day. But it just coincides with the speech we're gonna have in just a few minutes, the presentation, and this month. So it's a Kenai Peninsula Borough, Alaska proclamation, acknowledging Ketch Mac Bay Recovery Connection and encouraging Kenai Peninsula Borough residents to participate in National Recovery Month. Whereas September has been designated National Recovery Month in the state of Alaska and nationwide in an effort to educate Americans that substance use disorder treatments, mental health services can enable those with substance use disorders to live a healthy and rewarding life. And whereas Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery, reinforcing the positive messages that behavioral health is essential to overall health, prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. And whereas every day, residents of the Kenai Peninsula Borough recover from substance use disorders and join the many others in our community who live a long-term recovery, in long-term recovery. And whereas the twenty twenty-five National Recovery Month theme, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community, reminds people in recovery and those who support them that no one is alone in the journey through recovery. And whereas alcohol and drug addictions are a public health issue of concern to all Alaskans, but with proper support from family, friends, medical professionals, and the community at large, those affected can overcome their disease. And whereas we must provide support and compassion for relatives and friends with substance use disorders and recognize the signs of a problem and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas individuals in recovery can help dispel myths and stigma surrounding substance use disorders and addictions and can serve as guides for others throughout the course of treatment. And whereas the Kenai Peninsula Borough supports local recovery coalitions and programs in an effort to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery. Now therefore, I, Peter A. Machiki, Mayor of the Kenai Peninsula Borough, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-five as National Recovery Month and invite all residents to learn about and participate in National Recovery Month. I encourage all residents to express compassion for those who are struggling with substance use, to foster an open, honest, and supportive dialogue about the effects of substance use in our communities and support programs that improve the circumstances for fellow Alaskans striving for recovery. The KPB acknowledges the efforts of Ketch Mac Bay Recovery Connection to achieve those common goals. It's proclaimed this September by Peter A. Machiki, Kenai Peninsula Borough Mayor, and appropriate for the following presentation, but maybe you all can join me for a quick photo, those both from the hospital and from the K Bay Recovery Connection on this important month.
Thank you, Mayor Machiki. That moves us on to presentations with prior notice. Today we have one, KBB seven-one-seven-one, Ketch Mac Bay Recovery Connection. Please come to the podium and you will have ten minutes for your presentation.
Hello. Thank you for having us. Thank you for that proclamation. My name's Jaclyn Rainwater and I'm the Peer Support Manager for Ketch Mac Bay Recovery Connection. And I've been in recovery since August of two thousand and thirteen.
I'm Harold Sargent. I'm a peer support specialist for Ketch Mac Bay Recovery Connections.
And this is Mackenzie Parker over here who received the proclamation. She's our new operations manager. So um, next slide, please. Um, first of all, we want to thank uh, our financial support. Uh, South Peninsula Hospital has supported us for the last few years, the Kenai Peninsula Borough for the opioid settlement grant, uh, which has helped our programming significantly, and the uh, State of Alaska for the opioid settlement grant as well. Our mission statement is KBRC is a recovery community organization for people affected by addiction, offering recovery support, access to resources, and fulfilling connection to a sober community from Nanilchik to Nanwalek. Some of our objectives are reducing stigma, normalizing recovery and sobriety, overcoming barriers through peer support services, and fostering hope and connection through a sober community. Um, the four major dimensions of recovery according to SAMSA are health, home, purpose, and community. Community is what we focus on the most and those other three dimensions come into play as well. So a little bit about where we've come from and where we're going. Um, in December of twenty twenty-one, recovery ready community was a concept um, during the health needs assessment in our community. Um, and in twenty twenty-two, KBRC took action on that and became a five oh one C three and a recovery community organization, um, receiving mentorship from faces and voices of recovery. In August of twenty twenty-two, we began doing outreach, um, things like the Sober Garden at Salmon Fest, doing monthly sober events, uh, presenting at the Rotary Club and different things like that, and started gaining small donations of about three hundred dollars. And then in twenty twenty-three, we received the Kenai Peninsula Borough Opioid Settlement Grant, which um, was our first big chunk of change, which really helped us with our programming um, and get the ball rolling. And since then, we've also received the state opioid settlement grant. And that's where we've been able to um, hire peer support and open our recovery center and continue with our uh, stigma reduction and our monthly events that we do. So a recovery community organization is an independent nonprofit organization that's governed and led by people in recovery. Faces and Voices of Recovery is a national organization that helps support RCOs, promote best practices, and we have partnered with them and they gave us a mentor to help guide the growth and um, of our organization and develop best policies and procedures. RCOs have been known to sustain long-term recovery for individuals and help reduce relapse rates. So our service area is from uh, we say Nanilchik to Nanwalek, so Nanilchik south down to Homer and across the bay to places like Port Graham, Nanwalek, Soldovia, as long as our, uh, as well as our Russian communities, uh, like Nikolivus, Vaznosevka, um, Ralzadona, and um, those are the places that we do outreach to currently. This is our recovery center. It's a great photo with those moose in there. Um, we call it the living room, emphasis on living, um, our new lives, and it's sort of a cafe vibe where people can just come and be present and get connected to people in recovery, have somebody to talk to, have a cup of coffee, um, and just sort of reset. But we also have our peer support services there. So if somebody wants one-on-one help, they're able to talk to somebody and do those peer support services as well. We've uh, begun doing outreach to the Russian communities and bringing Narcan kits and informational packets about what addiction treatment and recovery resources are in the community. And um, I keep using the term peer support. For those who don't know, um, peer support is somebody who uses their lived experience in recovery from substance use or mental health uh, to help somebody else. And a couple of examples of that is um, sharing their lived experience to encourage someone else, provide emotional support during hard times, um, help building recovery skills, so things like relapse prevention and healthy ways to manage stress, offer resource navigation, and that's something that we do a lot of um, with our peer support services is if somebody wants to apply for housing, wants to go to detox, wants to go to a, a twelve-step meeting, or build a resume, um, we help do those uh, resource navigation and can get people to the places they need to be to um, support their recovery journey. Um, and also to bridge to the community and help people make those healthy networks. So this is just a little bit on what our participants are saying, and um, we have about forty participants now with a lot of more um, like one-time contacts, but a lot of people who come into the living room and they say things like the events that we do have showed me how to have fun in sobriety. They show me that I'm not alone. I was offered love and empathy and hope when I needed it most. And um, right there it said, uh, the community has helped me become the man that I am today. So some really um, encouraging words to K Bay Recovery. I wanted to give Harold a second to share about his experience as a peer support specialist.
Yeah, so I'm Harold Sargent and I'm a peer support specialist. And uh, what that means is I get to help people on their recovery journey from uh, active addiction to uh, building resumes or driving them to twelve-step groups or just really being present for any different uh, multiple facets, um, that's pretty broad, the things that I'm allowed to do, as long as it is helping people in their recovery journey. And um, you know, being a part of that, uh, and watching the confidence in the people that I work with grow as they uh, achieve small wins or big wins also has really um, uh, done a lot for me as well. And um, yeah, it's a, it's a pretty great gig, so.
So um, the data platform that we use is called the Recovery Data Platform, and it's how we measure our impacts and um, it does a number of things. It helps us with uh, participant demographics, attendance records, volunteer hours, um, goal achievement, and uh, also tracks the events that we do. So it helps us in uh, regards for things like numbers for grant purposes, but it also helps us to set goals with a participant and um, see where they want to go, how they're doing, when to check in with them again, and it also tracks if they've come to our events, if they've helped at our events, so we can pull that up and say, um, so-and-so has helped for fourteen hours, and then they can add that to their resume. So it helps us, it helps them, and it's a great platform that we're using. Some of our partners and collaborators um, are listed here, Soldovia Village Tribe, Set Free, um, Homer Police. We do actually do a lot of work with the Central Peninsula Hospital, bringing people to Detox and Serenity House. Um, and we are able to fill some of the gaps um, for some of these agencies when they're not able to do something. That's where our peer support services come into play. And I just wanted to buzz through a few of our events. Um, so this is the Recovery Speaker Series that we do every quarter. Somebody shares their story. We usually add music and food and it's a really good time. Outreach to Salmon Fest and Concert on the Lawn. Um, the kayak trip across the bay. This is a really fun one. A lot of people saying, I've, I would never be able to do this if I was using this. I've never done anything like this before. Um, we usually get the guys from the local treatment center out of the house and get to bring them with us. Overdose Awareness Day honoring the lives of those lost to overdose. A photo from that event as well. Um, Recover Alaska is a nonprofit in Anchorage that's given us quite a few mini grants and helping us with some of our events. Holiday Sober Cafe that we do every Christmas. Uh, SVT, Soldovia Village Tribe, we do a monthly event with them, Potluck. Sober Skate. You can fly through these, sorry. I do want to touch, there's the one that I want to touch on. I just want to thank Mayor Machiki again for being our emcee. It was awesome to have such support from him. And there he is, doing. Go ahead. Um, as we said, it's National Recovery Month, and um, this is actually my last slide for the ten seconds. I just wanted to say recovery is not just about quitting drugs, quitting alcohol. It's about living a life of purpose and value and uh, giving to the next person who's struggling, and you guys have played a big part in that, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. That's important work that you do. Are there any assembly questions or comments that you'd like to make? Assembly Member Morton?
I really appreciated the way you ended that, your, your comments at the end there. That was great. Thank you. Um, and then my question is, what's the greatest obstacle for you all in reaching your mission objectives? Can you say that one more time? What is your greatest, or one of the obstacles that you find in trying to reach your mission objectives? Like you had those nice objectives at the beginning and I'm just wondering like, what are the, what is, what is the most difficult component of reaching those objectives?
Um, I would say, well, part of it was financial support and being able to do, uh, wanting to go out to people and outreach, um, being able to hire the folks to do that, um, and, but just sometimes the, the stigma with different people in the community, um. But the more we're talking about it and doing stuff like this, um, people are willing to have those conversations and we're able to meet the goals that we're trying to meet, so.
Thank you.
Mayor Machiki?
So there was a sign-up during the run, um, in the the tent for you guys, and I'll just uh, in two thousand twenty-three, the rest of the country has started to level off and reduce in drug overdose fatalities. I think there are three hundred and fifty-seven drug overdose deaths in Alaska in twenty-three, which was a forty-four point five percent increase from the previous year. So how would you, how do we get the word out that Alaska is an outlier in a very negative way so that people will understand that addiction affects absolutely every one of us, either in our direct relationships or in our indirect relationships. It is a community issue.
Yeah, I think um, if people would be willing to have the hard conversations, um, and just know that addiction touches nearly everyone's life. If it's not them directly, it's probably one removed. And um, if we can have those conversations and say, you know, Narcan is something that saves people's lives. There's no shame in holding Narcan in your car to save a life, um, and just talk about these type of things, um, you know, it's not a moral failing if you do drugs. It's a disease, and if you're, you're a sick person looking to get well, and if we just keep talking about that, um, the more help we're going to be able to provide.
Thank you. Vice President Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jaclyn, thank you for all that you do for our community and um, to your entire group. Um, makes a huge difference. So a couple of years ago, you know, we were kind of struggling with making progress because we didn't have enough inpatient beds. Are we seeing that we're finally getting a few more and what do you have an idea of a number that would satisfy a community number of additional beds that are still needed?
I'm looking over to Alex for this one real quick. If you don't mind, he helps run Serenity House here in Salat, and I'm sure you guys know.
My name's Alexander Napier. I'm the clinical supervisor for peer support with the Behavioral Department at Central Peninsula Hospital. We currently have forty residential beds, and that's making a dent. Uh, we have fourteen that are short-term residential, which have the highest turnover that lasts anywhere from four to six weeks on average, but somebody with a higher acuity is going to be there three months sometimes. And then we have our longer-term facility, which is sixteen-bed facility, but people occupy those beds for about a year. If we were to double those numbers today, I still think we need more. You know, so I don't know if there's anything that we could ever get fully ahead on, but that's not even our biggest problem. Our biggest problem is finding housing for these individuals after. That is the biggest deficit we face. I can get people well all day long, but what, what do we do after that? You know, these people have evictions on their records. They have criminal records. You know, I wouldn't be in a home right now if it weren't for my wife because of my record. So, you know, it just goes to show the difficulties that we face really begin after we get them well. Once they're on a path to recovery, so.
I would say, well, that's all great information, and I'm really proud of the beds that we do have. Those are addiction treatment beds. We also have a gigantic mental health prob- uh, problem and folks actually hold in the hospital until we can get them out of area to a psychiatric hospital. We have folks tonight waiting on beds at either Bartlett or API, and sometimes they wait with us for several weeks while Alaska statute only actually commits them to a seventy-two hour evaluation. So I think if there was an opportunity to move forward with building um, psychiatric beds for people, you're nodding your head, so I'm glad to, glad to see that that rings to you. Um, but actually, before we can build psychiatric beds, we need some infrastructure, which is actually what we're here to talk about um, tonight is the Mobile Crisis Program that we're um, going to be starting through the hospital where we will actually, I'm going to steal Matt's phrase, where we will DoorDash you mental health because we want people to, um, we want people to have access to resources, even if we don't have a bed for them. We want people to know that they're valued and we can, we can get there and help them.
Very briefly, um,
I'm, I'm sorry, but we missed the previous presenter's name for the record. Could you state your name for the record, please? Did you get them, Madam Clerk?
And then as far as
I believe it was Christie Sellers.
Thank you.
As far as the Southern Kenai Peninsula, we have one men's residential treatment center that holds sixteen men. We have no women's um, facility. What, but what I can say is over the last few years, we've had that men's residential treatment center that's long-term treatment and then a sober living home that holds five men, I believe, right now. That's about a year long, and that's where the magic happens. If you can go to detox, in my opinion, in my humble opinion, you can go to inpatient treatment long-term and then long-term sober living, um, that kind of sets people up. I went to a treatment center for sixteen months. And I'm not saying that's everybody, but um, you know, if we can help people in beds long-term, get on their feet, uh, that's where a lot of change is made, so. More beds are better.
Thank you. Any additional assembly questions or comments? Mayor Machiki?
It'll be very quick. I appreciate what you're doing on the recovery side, but at some point, we have to have a very serious discussion about the preventative side. I'm not even sure what that looks like because I don't know how we got into this position, but um, that's a discussion we have to have as a community as well.
And the Southern Kenai Peninsula is doing some great things in that area too with the Resilience Coalition. So yeah, prevention, treatment, recovery, they all play their part and we've, we're playing our part, but it's all important for sure.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I grew up in the seventies and eighties, as did some of the other people who were up in the front, and there certainly were substance abuse issues back in those days, and they pale in comparison to some of the things that are out there available nowadays. All right, on that note, and thank you for what you do. Uh, Mayor Machiki, I believe it's your turn.
Okay, thank you for my mayor's report. Um, I'll hit the highlights. Marathon Chief Business Transformation Officer Brian Partee was here. And we met with the mayors and sen- or Assembly President Ribbons. Um, and then they had a VP of Refining, VP of the Kenai Refinery, Bruce Jackman and others. Essentially, our message to them is we want you here. And uh, looking for ways that we can support that business unit right here in the Kenai. If anyone doesn't know what it means to us here economically and as far as jobs and housing and other things, uh, we can talk about that offline. That same day, I also met the FCC Commissioner All- That same day, I also met the FCC Commissioner Al- um, Oliva Trustee, which was interesting. I didn't get to stay with the KPPST discussion with Senator Murkowski, but it did meet her. Um, and it was interesting. The reason I had to leave was the roundtable, um, panelist, I was a roundtable panelist with, uh, the Kenai River Sport Fishing Association Roundtable and I was on the section of Voices in Government from Capitol Hill to the Kenai Peninsula. And on my panel was myself, Congressman Begich and Mark Van Dorn, the, uh, Board of Fish Chair. And it was, uh, we were actually typing up the things that I said, which people were really, um, what someone said to me is you could have canceled the other panels and that would have been the only thing I learned all day. And it was the value of four boats. I own four boats. I have a sport fishing boat for the river, uh, a quiet sport fishing boat for the river that has oars, a halibut boat for the inlet and a commercial fishing boat. And all four of them have equal value to our community. And I just talked about the fact that the commercial, the commerce part of our fisheries, uh, do not provide enough flexibility to respond when you have two and a half million additional fish. And I was surprised the people that warmed up to that discussion from all the user groups that were present. So anyway, I will have that typed up. Uh, Cassidy's working on it and available for anyone's interested. We continue, continue discussions with the Vaught Lake folks and see if we can pull something together on the trailhead. Either before their deadline or for the next funding round. Attended on the twenty-first, Senator Dan Sullivan had a, um, big beautiful bill, forum with local leaders, just talking about the effects in Alaska. It was an interesting discussion. The most negative post we've had on in Kenan Peninsula Borough history was just posting the fact that meeting occurred. So I guess people believe that we shouldn't sit through meetings to learn about one side of an issue, um, but I will continue to do so. So. Anyway, very partisan responses, not really a partisan guy. Saturday, the twenty-third was Industry Appreciation Day. Great job Dana from my staff and Joe and many of the others, plus folks from the community recognizing the importance of commercial fishing, tourism, medical, healthcare and, uh, oil and gas on the Kenai. It's always a great event. I don't know, fifteen hundred people showed up. It rained a little bit. Nothing Alaskans leave for. Then Sunday, the twenty-fourth, I get to, I got to give welcoming comments to the Congressional Sportsman's Foundation, which are state representative and senators from all over the country that participate in, um, outdoor access, hunting, fishing, um, and other outdoor activities, just, um, defending those rights, if you will. Good group, nice meeting. Interviewed on the twenty-fifth with TV Tokyo DC producer Maximilian Howard on, guess what? Oh yes, the AKLNG project and how energy affects Kenai Peninsula. I was on with Captain Mailer on KDLL with Hunter Morrison, one of his last few shows. Kenau Conversation about the Cook Inlet Harbor Safety Committee. We met with Kenitee on a cooperative agreement for some of their new housing on the twenty-fifth. We have interviewed and are attempting to hire a guy that we're really excited about for solid waste director. I believe he's a go. Um, so we'll get the news out as soon as that's solidified. Got a call from the Assembly President over the weekend about the Nikiski Post Office and he and I and others are involved with providing a solution interim if necessary, but hopefully a long-term solution for mail service returning to Nikiski. A lot of complaints, a lot of concerns. I spoke to Melissa Maderos, who's Senator, or the Assembly President did as well. Um, and we think there's a plan going forward, engage with Senator Sullivan's office and our own, uh, Nikiski rec in case they need an emergency spot. So I think that's moving forward in a positive direction. We had a meeting with Homer Seniors for the fact that their Homer Senior Adult Daycare Program is not operating right now. We're concerned about that and looking for a way to help. That's unfortunate and I kind of wish we would have had earlier notice. That's one of our grant programs that we provide through the borough. And, uh, we'd like to see that return. So we will stay engaged. Heather is dealing with that and staying in touch on ways that we can, if they come back, so they essentially return the funding. I don't know that we are going to formally receive it. We're hoping that they want it back to continue that program. And then Saturday, I got to be a starting official and emcee, um, very well-run event. Um, if you can get weather like that to show up for all of your events, we might have to get you involved with some of ours. That was pretty spectacular. Hope everyone enjoyed their Labor Day weekend. I signed the Clayton Way Agreement this morning for this winter, so hopefully that work continues. There's a guy in the back of the room that worked on that who no longer works for us, um, but, uh, finally got across the finish line on it. So thank you for that. Talked to Principal Stokes today. What they didn't recognize about Chapman is it was going to cut thirty minutes off of drop-off and pickup. Which parents are really happy. I'm not sure if they're as happy about being off the highway, but they're thrilled about being able to drop off ten kids at a time. So it's going well. We have some lighting that we have to get completed and, um, but the project's operating and, and, uh, folks seem to love it. So that's a good thing. School bond update, um, which I promise every month. Now, we're not carry, we, John, we need to put out a list of what's gotten done instead of what's in play. Because the list was long after the bond passed and it's getting very short. The Soldatna High School Siding Project is going well. We're, um, projects and contractor and the school is meeting once a week to make sure that sort of everyone's knowledgeable about what's going on for that week, trying to stay out of their way the best we can. The drop-off is done at Chapman, like I said, other than some lighting. Soldatna Schools Project, that proposal was received from the consultant, sent back upon review for a few minor adjustments and we hope to see that final in the next, um, couple of weeks. Their Homer High School Front Entrance is complete and the landscaping will be completed in spring with assistance from the students. The Hope Roof is complete, sewer track is complete, but we will get a list together of all the projects that were approved and what's gotten done in the meantime, um, and what work remains to be done. Recycling update, we have an agreement on the new compactor heading our way. We are working with Tom, who's the interim, um, director, preparing, uh, what needs to be done at the Central Peninsula Landfill and other needs of solid waste, including recycling around the borough. And, um, once this is complete, we're going to make it available for folks just so they understand all of the challenges that we're looking at in municipal solid waste. Lot of work to do. Every time we circle around, it seems like we identify something else that could use improvement. But we do hope to be back in the cardboard recycling business here relatively shortly. We have some consistency to improve in policies around the borough. I could go on for a long time. This is a short report and I'm ready for questions.
Any questions for the mayor? I don't see any. So I guess you are off the hook. Okay, back to the agenda. I made a mistake and I jumped into the mayor's report and forgot to do public comments on items not appearing on the agenda. So what we're going to do is back up and do public comments on items on the agenda and because we have such an abbreviated agenda today, that means that we're going to have public comments followed directly by public comments. And I don't want to, if there's one thing that I've learned in my year as the presiding officer is you don't want to infringe on the public's opportunity to give public comments. So what we're going to do is have a public comment period. We're going to take a five-minute break and then we're going to have another five, another public comment period in case anyone wants to speak twice. Or if anybody thinks of something else that they wanted to talk about, and I apologize for the mistake on my part, even though I really feel like blaming the vice president for it, but I can't. Does that make sense to you, Madam Clerk, to do that approach? Okay. So, public comments on items not appearing on the agenda. Is there anyone like, who would like to comment on items not appearing on the agenda? Madam Clerk.
Thank you. I have Jan Wallace.
Jan Wallace, please come to the podium, state your name and your place of residence and you will have three minutes.
Name is Jan Wallace. I live at three-six-one-two-zero Irons Avenue in Soldatna. I've lived in this community since nineteen seventy-five, which I find amazing, but obviously it's an amazing community for me to stay. My interest have always been involved with basically environmental issues and resource management and development and new ideas that are happening out there that are making us grow as human beings and considering all options when we look at things. And because I had this interest in nineteen eighty-nine, I was one of many people who, in the community, who had a concern about all of the potentially recyclable material that was being buried in the landfill. Long story short is the group coalesced. It involved borough employees and we created Regroup, which has been in existence for thirty-six years now. And, uh, started independent recycling in nineteen ninety-two. The building and the baler were, the assembly decided to go that direction with the waste products. And from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand seven, they baled all of the garbage and all the recycle, which when you think about it was an amazing choice. In two thousand seven, they found out that the baled garbage was not breaking down and it was impeding the landfill's functionality. So they just started recycling just the, uh, baling just the recyclables. So considering that all this was going on, it's not a surprise that in last December in two thousand twenty-four, the baler quit. And so we have all these situations that we need to look at and deal with and consider all possible solutions, which we have actually a pretty good opportunity here. In the, uh, creation of Regroup, we were included in the, uh, pamphlet that describes solid waste and all the things they do and where they do it. And it was stated that we were, we are a nonprofit that works closely with the solid waste staff to publish educational newsletters, conduct workshops and provide public outreach at all these community events, which we've done over years. And that's the role we played is educational and trying to always have up-to-date information out, which is why we try to deep dive occasionally and figure out what's going on and why it's doing and trying to get, put that information out there. It says Regroup generally functions as a clearinghouse for recycling and related issues, along with other waste recycling organizations that provide valuable volunteer public outreach that complements the KPP Solid Waste Program. And that's been our intent since we started and we, that's the intent that we function under. I will note that in two thousand seven, employees of the borough basically recruited us to help do the electronics recycling. And we've been doing that for sixteen years and we've done about a hundred and twenty tons of electronics that have not been buried in the waste.
Your, your three minutes, could you wrap up, please?
Pardon?
Your, your three minutes have expired. Could you please wrap up?
So I can come back later and give you the data I'd like to share?
You can do that.
Okay, thank you. So should we?
Unfortunately, you'll have to come back after we take our break.
That's what I, that's what I felt.
Please do.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, is anyone else signed up?
No, sir.
Is there any one in the audience who would like to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name and your place of residence and you'll have three minutes.
John Core, Calafonki Beach Area. I just wanted to comment on, I've, I know I've said this before, but, and maybe it has to happen through the state of Alaska, but people I've talked to that have lived out of this state in America, as they say, they all vote on one day in November and they vote on one ballot from the dog catcher clear to the president, one ballot. So maybe that doesn't, maybe we have to do that through the state first and change election, whatever they do, but some, anyway, I won't. And the other things, um, when the other man was talking, the, the machines, those voting machines have modems in them. They say they aren't hooked up to the internet. They have modems in them. People can hack into them very easily. You can get on the internet. You can look up their numbers. You can get into them. And also that, that doesn't count your ballot. It counts, that it takes pictures and it counts the pictures, the, with the little marks you make. And one of those machines, not in this state, and I don't think this borough is trying to, you know, trip people. But in other places, they surely have. And, uh, they audited one machine and because it takes pictures, they found out that the first ballot they took a picture of was inters- inserted into the, every fourth ballot that was supposed to be counted was that first picture. That was what they found when they audited one of the machines. They're easy to hack and, um, that's come from experts. So. Not that I think that that would happen in this borough, but people don't trust it. So I just really would like to see us vote in one day and I'd like to, however we can do it, is get us to vote for everything on one ballot like they do. In lower forty-eight. Anyway.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to come and provide public comment? Madam Clerk, is there anyone online who, who would like to provide a comment?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, in that case, thanks to errors by the presiding officer, we are going to take a five-minute break and return to public comment. Okay, the assembly is all back together and due to mistakes by the president, this brings us back to public comments and public presentations, three minutes per speaker. Madam Clerk, is anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that I bet there's at least one who would like to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name and your place of residence for the record and you will have three minutes.
Three-six-one-two-zero Irons Avenue, Soldatna. And I will start in the middle because the main point of what I was trying to get to is the fact that this community supports recycling a lot. Starting since eighty-nine, doing it on our own, becoming ed- at the educational branch for getting people to. This is a banner that one of two, the other one's hanging out at the landfill, that we had done in two thousand twenty.
Please, please stay by the microphone because otherwise it will not be on record.
Sorry. That we had done in two thousand twenty and it shows the tonnage of the different materials that were recycled in the year two thousand and twenty. I got. Data from Tim Corrine, when he was here as acting director, comparing it to two thousand twenty-four. And basically, the data goes aluminum went from twenty-four tons to thirty-nine tons. From twenty to twenty-four. Cardboard went to three, from three hundred and twenty-six tons to seven hundred and ninety tons, which is over-doubled the amount. Mixed paper went from one hundred and thirty-four tons to a hundred and ninety-eight tons in that four years. So each year, X amount, so that volume of material has been not put in the landfill. So extrapolate that over, out over twenty, thirty years, that's a lot of cubic footage. So this community supports it, they have hauled this stuff, put it in recycle bins. It's gone through the processing, bailed, yes, it has to be hauled, it gets processed, whichever direction it goes. But mixed office paper went from ninety-eight to sixty tons, it went, it's the only thing that went down, don't know why. We'll look into that. Plastics number one went from seventeen to twenty-six tons. Plastics number two went from eleven to twenty-one tons. So those are tonnages of things that are not being buried. So the communities collected that, they put it together. It was frustrating in January, of, in December, when the baler went down. We, I understand all the processes that go on, I understand we're in a situation where many decisions have to be made, need to reevaluate. But basically, it comes down to the community's is supportive. There are groups that are willing to work with, coming out with the problem solving. There is a frustration that in January, when we put out our newsletter. We had to rewrite the article because the baler had just gone down and we just figured it out. The borough personnel approved this statement. And it says, the Kenai Peninsula Borough will accept aluminum and glass. Has not been affected. The question is, we need to get through the problems to get that recycled. And some of it has been buried, which I was very sad to find out, and I don't know how much, when and who. But that's, those are problems that we need to deal with, because the community does care, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment? Madam Clerk?
I am not seeing anyone.
Okay, with that, we will close public comments and presentations, and we will go to assembly comments. Let's see, we'll start with Assembly Member Dunn this evening.
Thanks, Mr. President, thanks everybody for coming out. Thank you to the Ketchumac Bay Recovery Connection for making their presentation, uh, organization very near and dear to my heart. And I uh, I'm just, I continue to be impressed by the, the work being done by the, uh. Not only the staff members, but the volunteers, uh, it was really, really good to um. Have a couple of staff members here, including uh, the new operations manager, um, Mackenzie Parker. Who just started last week and uh, really happy to have her in the community, helping out the Ketchumac Bay Recovery Connection. And uh, to be transparent, I am on the board of directors of that organization. And uh, I um, I'm very, very supportive, obviously. And uh, really glad to see folks coming out from um, Central Peninsula Hospital, from uh, Serenity House also. Very important uh, aspect of, of community support for um, helping people in recovery from addiction. And as, as was said, you know, early, earlier on this evening, that um, you know, uh, people dealing with addiction issues. Are, are not uh, dealing with moral failure or um, behavioral problems. It's, it's an illness, it's a medical condition that uh, can be treated and, and the um, recovery should be the expected outcome. With uh, good community support and good medical support for those folks, so. Also, last Wednesday in Homer, um, assembly members were invited to uh, community breakfast. With the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation, and I uh, was able to attend that breakfast and actually got um. Uh, to sit with the uh, new director of the Alaska Sustainable Energy Corporation, Melanie Lucas Conwell. And uh, had a really great conversation with her. The ASEC, the uh, Alaska Sustainable Energy Corporation is a brand-new um, independent corporation. But uh, co- cooperating with Alaska Housing Finance to um, work on uh, financing. Both uh, through um, government and private capital for financing uh, energy uh, projects. Sustainable energy in particular, green energy and um, energy efficiency, saving money, saving energy for uh, for our communities. So looking forward to working with uh, Melanie as uh, as the Alaska Sustainable Energy Corporation develops. She, she was very interested in um, uh, working with the Kenai Peninsula Borough on some initiatives down here, so. That was a really productive uh, community breakfast, um, and I'm glad that I was able to attend that. And otherwise, um, I won't be able to be at the next meeting in person, I hope I can uh, attend via Zoom. But uh, my wife and I will be uh, visiting family and um, but we'll be back, I'll be back for the uh, the next, the meeting after that, so. Anyway, thanks, we'll see you then.
Thank you, Assembly Member Tunseth.
Thank you, President Ribbons, um, I was gonna just spend most all of my time roasting um, Mr. Basin. Especially since he's not here and kind of running out of time on us. Uh, but I think he'll still have one more meeting or two, uh, if I'm not mistaken, that we'll have that opportunity. So maybe I'll, I'll save up for that and encourage everybody else to do the same. A- as the merit indicated, I also attended Industry Appreciation Days, that was a great event, um, really well executed. It was just a, always a good event in Kenai and, and really well attended, and so just thank everybody that was involved there. Um, I'm gonna keep it really short tonight, I just wanted to ask everybody, you know, you probably heard, but there was a young woman that's a member of our community. That was pretty seriously injured in a um, bear attack happened here just uh, about a week ago. Um, her name is Arian Fabrizio Colton, um, young mother, new family that had just moved here and a really tragic accident. And so just ask that everybody kind of keep them in your hearts, I know they've set up a GoFundMe account as well. Um, but you know, just try to show, you know, people that are new to this community kind of the best of, of what our community can be and help them out. But without, that's all I have, thank you, everybody have a nice night.
Thank you, Assembly Member Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President, I was uh, grateful to see Ketchumac Bay Recovery Connection. And Central Peninsula Hospital Mental Health folks uh, that are working with rehabbing. People that have had uh, drug and alcoholic addictions, uh, presenting together tonight, I think that's great. I've uh, I have a heart for those people and I super appreciate everybody that's working to make them come. Uh, you know, recover and whatnot, and I know some people that have recovered that are model citizens now. And so there is hope, and so um, that uh, warms my heart, there's, everybody that's got life has hope, so um, that's important. Also, I wanted to mention that there's very few things that I'm ahead of Mayor Machiki on. But in one area, there is, he had his four boats, I have five, I got five boats. Now unfortunately, I haven't had the opportunity to use, for, to use them for three years. But this year, I did get the opportunity to, to use two of them for two days. And in those two days, I helped the set netters catch forty thousand sockeye. At the same time as they caught five king salmon. Of course, those numbers didn't justify another day of fishing, but it was nice to get my two boats some exercise. Last of all, I want to send out an invitation. There will be a meeting at Casiloff Fire Station on September eighteenth. That's a Thursday night at six o'clock. There's been a controversy in our community regarding Spruce Grove Memorial Park, that's the cemetery in Casiloff. It got a land grant in nineteen fifty-six, it's been run by Casiloff Coho Cemetery Association. For sixty-nine years and at this time, there's a controversy. And so I'm going to host a meeting at the fire station and we're going to work our way through it and I'll come away as friends. So if you're interested, be there September sixth, or September eighteen at six P M. And with that, Mr. President, thank you.
Assembly Member Borton.
I also want to thank our presenters tonight, it was informative and gave me optimism and hope, so thank you. Uh, I enjoyed Industry Days, um, I've been getting out and speaking with several people and several businesses. From my um, my general area from Funny River and Sterling, so I've been learning a lot, I love hearing from people, please email me or call me. Um, and I had a wonderful Labor Day weekend with my family, it was really nice just to focus in on family for a weekend. And we enjoyed it, thank you.
Assembly Member Cox.
Thank you. First off, I would like to say that I did not go to Industry Appreciation Day this year. I generally do, we had for a lot of years, we've done it for many years, in fact, over the years, we've won, even won a couple bikes. Um, but now that my kids are older, we don't always make those, um, but what I was gonna share is that we were actually at the Ted McKinney Invite. Which is a cross-country race that is, I, if not the largest, one of the largest in the state. Because um, it's an invite that's not just a state tournament. So state tournament is of course the, the big important one, but only if you run a certain speed, you get to go to the state tournament. So this one had over eight hundred kids from throughout the state, and that is just a lot of people up at Skyview. If you, if you've never seen the parking lot up there full, that is one that will get it full. And so anyways, that was a whole lot of fun. They have another one this weekend, I believe, I'm not sure it's either in Anchorage or Valley, I'm not positive, but they're out of town. I was also gonna remind folks that we have uh, ballot measures coming up, we have a lot of people running for positions, five open seats on the assembly. That means um, there's lots of opportunities for people to get to know their candidates and the issues. And those opportunities are like radio, we have print, um, we have live, there's live um, forums. And those are all recorded, so you can go and, and check out the information on your candidates or any of those that are of interest to you. It's important for people to get out and to um, learn about, about who they may be voting on. And so get out there and do it, um, there's no excuse, but any of that you just make up, so you might as well go out and check it out, thanks.
Assembly Member Eklund.
Thank you, President Ribbons, um, a few years ago, when I first got on the assembly. We were having quite a few discussions about behavioral health and how we needed to do something about it. So tonight was a great night to hear both about the uh, cooperative agreement between M C T C P H. And I don't have the acronym for the dispatchers, but I think that's just great, wonderful. And Ketchumac Bay Recovery Connection's presentation was fabulous. Come from a family that had those abuses and I wish there had been those opportunities for some of them back in those days. This weekend, uh, we had a fabulous memorial for one of our uh. Greatest um, residents in our hometown, born and raised in Seward, Margaret Anderson's memorial. And I picked up this musings of Margaret's that her family had prepared. And this one really hits home tonight, service is the rent you pay for being here. So thank you all, assembly, and those who are running, and those who are working on all these great programs, thanks.
Vice President Cooper.
You know, when you're the last person, it's pretty hard to come up with something new. So I echo so many of the comments tonight, I love that one, maybe we should put that when we're looking for election poll workers. Um, because there is always a need for that, um, we always encourage people to participate in that process at any level they're comfortable with. Schools back in full swing, and it's really nice seeing people find their groove on that. The um, getting their kids off the highway in Anchor Point, I've seen that approach. And heard from folks that they really are grateful for that. And I really appreciate all of you coming tonight, um, I think this entire body, you are near and dear to our heart. And I just can't tell you what a difference you're making in our entire community, that's all I have, thank you.
Mayor Machiki.
Yeah, thank you, um. One of the things that I demand that we do with the public is make sure they. Don't have a basic idea of what's going on, that they have the facts about what's going on. And they're gonna have the facts about solid waste, and I don't care how many people testify here about something else, we're gonna take our time. We're gonna get it right, we're gonna partner with those groups willing to partner with us, because I have some plans for groups like Read Out, Regroup. And others as well, shipping materials out doesn't mean they're recycled. We're gonna do it right this time, we have a lot of issues in the solid waste department. So I appreciate you all working with us and being patient, we will get uh, things turned around. If this individual, we end up landing the individual that we're looking at, um, he has dealt with a lot of the common issues that we're dealing with now. Real-life solutions to real-life problems efficiently and what's best for the planet, instead of pretending to do what's best for the planet. So I think great things will happen, um, we'll, we, we will be reaching out. Dana is trying to set up a meeting with the Board of Regroup to sit down, talk about some of the possibilities on some batch loading. Volunteer efforts that we can do together once the new baler's installed, and I think there's some good things that can happen. But we have a lot of issues, there are going to be some big changes and it will result not only a better outcome today. But a better bottom-line outcome for the planet and a much more efficiently-run organization. So I appreciate everyone's patience, other than that, um, my wife has put up with me for twenty years, so. We uh, had our twenty-year anniversary and uh, hoping for, you know, a few more anyway, so. Thanks, Aaron, for putting up with me for that long.
Thank you, uh, I don't have a whole lot to talk about, I was going to say a few things about the Nikiski Post Office. But I believe Mayor Machiki covered both, covered pretty much everything on that one. I think it might be worth reminding people that this is, I mean, it's not a borough issue, this is a federal issue. Um, but it's just not acceptable for um, constituents anywhere to have to drive an hour or more. Total time to go get their mail, it's just not the way things should be, so we are optimistic that by this weekend, there will be at least a temporary. Opportunity for people to get their mail, probably in the Nikiski Community Club, uh, right in downtown Nikiski. And um, I did give Mayor Machiki a rather heated phone call Friday evening. Recognizing full well that indeed it's not his job and um, we are very appreciative that, since he does have some connections that I don't have. That he jumped in pretty promptly and seems as though it's making some difference, so thank you, Mayor Machiki, we appreciate your help. And with that, I see that for our next assembly meetings, the Madam Clerk has actually put two line items on there. Um, our regular assembly meeting is going to be September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, here at six o'clock, our standard one. We also, as I believe Chair Cox had, uh, excuse me, Chair Tunseth had mentioned, that there is going to be a work session. Maybe I'm getting the wrong chair on this one, but there's gonna be an ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one work session. Uh, that will also be here on the sixteenth, the time is to be determined. Um, both of those meetings are available for participation via Zoom, and with that, we are adjourned.